Okay, you're on.
We're on, okay. The January 8th Plankwood Workshop. Thank y'all for coming. First things I'd like to introduce Ben Smith, who ran up, been engaged. And Ben, maybe you could just tell them about yourself a little bit.
Sure. Good afternoon. I'm Ben from North Star Planning. And I've been working with towns around Maine for about 15 years or so, both as municipal planner. I've worked for a private engineering firm as a planner with them in the Portland area. But I'm working with a number of towns around from Kidney to Freeport, Kidney to Bangor sometimes when it comes to planning board support, ordinance review, plan review. Do a lot of specific planning project work as well, congressional planning or downtown planning. But I've been engaged by the town to provide services around plan review and planning board support specifically here in Acton. So as projects come in, helping Ken with putting materials together for the board, making sure that the board has what they need from applicants. And, you know, that may be sometimes attending planning board meetings as well. But I think this is really kind of an introduction, chance to say hello and get to know who, how those are going to be coming from and get a sense of the kinds of things that you're going to find valuable as well as we get started. So, thanks, nice meeting you.
Thank you.
So do you guys want me to talk for the next hour?
Yeah.
Or you guys just want to do more this hour?
Dennis, Jim, Gavin, Joyce.
Thank you. Look at that.
There you go. Yep, you're official.
That's right.
You're official.
He's getting along.
Usually our Wednesday workshops are second and fourth of the month. We don't vote at these meetings. We bring up action items, items for discussion, things that we need to work on because of certain timelines. An ordinance change, we have to have them ready to head upstairs so they can make it onto the board, you know, certain dates. And that is a lot of, and that keeps us very busy, as you can imagine. And when certain questions come up that, an example, not that I'm taking this on right this minute, but definitions of certain words in the ordinances. What's the difference between accept and approve? Approve, do we accept or do we approve? You know, that sort of thing. And we throw that out. And what are we planning ahead? What do we think we ought to be looking at? Short-term rentals, late rent. We are supposedly in a moratorium on the marijuana question. That's up to debate whether a moratorium was for a year or longer. And if the town does decide to opt-in, what do you think you want to do? So that's kind of what these meetings are for. Because when we have our regular meetings on the first and third Thursday of the month, we can be here till 10:00, 10:30 at night doing, you know, whatever comes before us, whatever's on our agenda. So we don't always have the time to hit this kind of thing. And Ken always has a list for us to do, which is usually nice. Sometimes we leave smiling, sometimes we don't. But that's because it comes from Kevin. But otherwise, it's okay. So that's where we are. Usually the first thing we throw at Ken is, you know, what do you have to do?
So I was hoping when we had Brent have Ben come down for this meeting, you guys at least know who we're talking to now. And I was hoping that the Youngs Ridge Road would have submitted their stuff so he could be leaving with it. But that's what we haven't got yet, so no big deal. We'll just have them FedEx him. As we get our copies, we'll have them send directly to him and then we'll work correspondence from there. So any of the projects we have going will all be escrows that are going to be compensated him. And leaves us about $1,000, which can go quickly, so we'll keep this time until we get to next budget season. And then hopefully we'll be able to address it, which is good.
Good.
So that being said, do you guys have any questions or thoughts for Ben and directions you'd like to see things going?
Well, let's start at this end of the table. But you don't have the full hour.
Okay. Well, at our last meeting, Ben, I brought up the fact in our applications for subdivision, for example, it says that, you know, we approve. They all say we approve the application from step to step. And what I thought and others were talking about was changing that to we accept the application. And the only one wording that we approved is the final plan rather than that. Because my argument would be if I was coming to do this and I gave you guys a planning board, a sketch plan, and you guys approved it, then I don't want to hear about changes that were made because you guys have already approved the sketch plan. And so I think the wording should be changed to accept until the final plan is one you approve. So to me, you're just accepting the paperwork and then you can go through it and you can do whatever you want to change in the requirements or recommendations or whatever. But to me, it's just a technical thing. But we've had some lawyers involved in a few things because of weight for different sides. And then you've got this lawyer with his opinion and this lawyer with his opinion. And then you've got us sitting here with our opinion. And I'd like to alleviate some of that. Do you know what I mean? I understand that we can do that ourselves as a planning board, change the wording in the application without going to town meeting because it's part of the zoning thing. And the only other thing that I guess I didn't, it was a few things. And one was the good neighbor ordinance we have talking to Kevin. If we follow that ordinance to, well, we want to some gray areas there. And every time that we had to make, do this stuff, we'd have to go through those own board of appeals because of the good neighbor ordinance we have. And he said he'd like to see that out of zoning, standalone document that we can refer to, when you think it's necessary as a planning board.
Yeah, because now it's considered a good neighbor policy, commercial development, that, conditional use and site plan, it's all in the zoning.
All in the zoning ordinance.
So if you want to, and as you know, each side has its own criteria and things. And if you want to deviate from, I think one of those things in this app is every 10 spots of parking needed in Ireland and things like that.
Right, right.
And if we wanted to deviate and change things, we really by rights have to send for the zoning board where it's in our zoning board. And so making good neighbor, conditional use and site plan a standalone document that was, you were sent to via the land use chart or some verbiage in this, go right into that other document.
And I just have one more thing right now. And I brought this up at the last meeting. Do we have the authority, and you might know this off the top of your head, to tax gravel that's leaving the town? Us put an assessment on gravel? I know there's some towns around that have done that. I'm going to tell you where. I know there's some in Massachusetts, I know there's some on.
They're all over the country, actually.
You know what I mean? And because my argument for this is that, well, two things. One, we're losing value of the town. And plus the fact that hauling this gravel out of town, most of it going down in Massachusetts, is really detrimental to our roads. And my thoughts that the money you would get from this would be put towards the upkeep of the roads because we are literally talking millions of dollars between the past and the future that's going to be hauled out of this town. And they'll probably do it until the town's fine. You know what I mean? But they have that solid working away out. This, they're done here, they just move with the next town and the next town. We have three big offices right now hauling out of this town to Massachusetts. Service, service on the gravel.
Yeah, I don't know, you asked me that question. Yeah, that would be more of a regulation from the selectmen's office, I would think, than a planning board.
There is mining, there is main state taxation for mining.
Yeah.
I mean, that I've found. The same way there is, well, New Hampshire taxes when you cut trees, depending on what kind and how much and that sort of thing. I did a lot of research on the excavation taxes. And this is, just as other states. And Maine is one of them that they list. And it's one of those areas, they call it excavation tax. But when you read some of the charts, it says mining. Now, do we mine gravel or do we excavate gravel? I mean, I don't know, so I'm asking you. It's mining. Okay, they cite one several things. Oklahoma earned approximately $175 million from mining taxes. Kentucky, $187, that included coal and things like that. West Virginia, $204 million. Colorado, $115 million, which is almost 2% of their total tax revenue. This says for Maine, not only can we tax a percentage, but the value of the equipment multiplied by .005. Gross proceeds of what they've mined out multiplied by .009, where the gross proceeds divided by the net proceeds multiple by 100, subtracted by .045. Now, all of that just came out of my mouth and flew over my head, okay? I mean, but there certainly is something there.
Borough mines, Joyce, is why I say it's mining. Because the borough mines are the gravel pit. That's what's at base.
And I also got this from the Maine Aggregate Association to give us more information, which I will share with everybody.
And I know this isn't something that's going to happen, right? We do have ordinances that regulate gravel extraction or mining.
State of Utah even has applications, I think they're applications.
So all this stuff here all came from the planning board, or state of Maine, or whatever. And that was the main question we had for, you know, with Kenny. I didn't know who did this, if the planning board did it or this is how it was. Obviously, it'd have to be voted on by the town board. But who puts it forward?
And I think it's usually pushed through by the selectmen. But no one we were talking water. I mean, we were concerned that somebody was going to come and steal all our water from the aquifers.
Maybe while you're looking at that, you know, the select board is going to have to approve any warrant that would go, so they have to be on board with the concepts or anything.
Right. I think, you know, just to sort of read this digestively, it's just, here we have great value. And it's not just that it's my land and I'm, you know, excavating all of this and I pay taxes on my land. I'm not paying taxes on the value of the product that is being shipped out. And it gets very, very tricky because there are some states, if it's not leaving your state, you don't get taxed as much as if it's leaving your state. Some very good lobbying and good legislation has happened with this. But it's something, you know, we lose land. That's the whole thing, we lose land. Like Dennis has pointed out, I think you did too. You start out on a mountaintop and you've got, you know, 150 acres. And by the time they're done, you've got 50 acres.
And you take that concrete and flatten it out.
You flatten that out and you've lost all of that. So it's something, one of the things.
A groundwater ordinance just says ask for fees in the fee schedule. So we can change the fee schedule and not have to go from town meeting to change the ordinances. Another setup with the groundwater.
Other ground.
But the groundwater never came. The companies that came and didn't pop now.
In doing this, there would be some interest from certain community vendors, pushback on doing something like that.
For sure.
But when you have one outfit, for example, that's projected, you know, $3 or $4 million, the ton of material they're leaving from the property they own, that's a lot of profit, that's a lot of, that's a lot of dirt.
In so many years or per year?
So many years.
In so many years.
This is what they, they see, the property that they own, what they anticipate money, you know? And that's a lot of dirt. This is just one.
And you figure they bought the property for the resources and that's the resource and they go to take it.
Right.
And when they're done, they're going to buy some more property and keep going or move to another location.
Yep.
They're not going wide.
Right. I think, you know, with, the difference between gravel and water is that the water is coming from an aquifer that everybody shares as opposed to, you know, something happening within the boundaries of a specific property. But I think your earlier point about the impact of operation on roads specifically, you know, that that kind of operation has an outsized impact compared to other commercial operations or residential development, you know, I think that's a valid concern. I just honestly, we have to look a little bit more about what kind of mechanisms the state would allow individual local municipalities to consider.
And in theory, the water's coming back unless you take too much and it has trouble regenerating. Of course, what all started this was the trees. We were focusing on trees, 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 and trees do come back. Maybe 50 years or 100, depending on the issues.
But not very well on a building gravel pit.
No, gravel pit, that means not bad.
Same thing with tree, you're very, yeah.
And you're talking about this too, you're talking about the water. When you take 500 feet off a hill and you take that down 500 feet, I don't care, really, I even supply piece. And you need to keep the, what, 10 feet above the water table? So if I take this down 30 feet to get to the 10 feet, there is no way that water's getting the same purification with work this happens there that it was before you took that 50 feet up. So it does affect not just the roads, it also will affect the water, the quality of water, it has to.
Every single gravel pit you're talking about is on top of the aquifer protection district because the gravel leads to the aquifer.
Correct, right.
They're connected that way.
And the whole town is basically on that. There may be different ones, but.
Right.
Right.
You know, this is a big pit I'm talking about is on that. They would take it, you know, it comes to a turn.
Right, so let's, let's just go, yeah, let's go on. Jim, is there anything that you?
At this time, no.
Okay. Gavin, to you.
Should we talk about this kind of stuff?
Well, let's just get it on the table and then we can go back, okay? To specific things.
Yeah.
And this would come back.
I'm trying to think of other things I can bring up, but I don't really have anything in my head for today.
Well, then I would suggest this.
Just go with this. I did write up some preliminary lines about short-term rentals or Airbnb's, just like kind of design standards, sort of speed. And then I started working on the contractor yards as well. So, but I mean, we can save that and not have it on this. We can discuss it after.
Sure.
This general discussion.
Sure.
It's fine, maybe.
Okay, great.
Those are a couple of issues, though, you're thinking we'll have with this year.
I'm thinking definitely.
We should look at.
The short-term rentals, I think, I mean personally, I think from what I've got, we could definitely get to town meeting this year. The contractor yards, just going to take some more discussion.
Yeah.
Because we're not, it's a little unclear as to what contractor yard is. I think, do we have a definition in our?
We don't.
We got to define the definition, so.
Yeah, and I think you're probably looking at similar to short-term rentals, level one, level two, level three.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've treated it as a home occupation, but a home occupation, you're supposed to drive by and not tell there's a business there, except for the sign up front.
Yeah.
Which, you know, if that was a level one, that would be a lot of your electricians, plumbers, even like avondry. It's when you get into, you have all this big equipment that you're doing stuff, whether it's excavation or foundations where you've got trucks, trailers, farms, and you can't, you don't have a building big enough to put all that stuff in, so.
Yeah.
And most of it, in generals, neatly placed. And I mean, it's definitely a service we need.
Yeah.
You know?
There was a business in Wells, I think it was just a year ago, a floor cleaning business. They did, you know, offices and banks.
Yeah.
It was just two people in this water. And they're operating out of the house. And they had a shed, they kept their chemicals and stuff. And they had a pageant. And the town of Wells tried to shut it down because your friends were running the business out of his home.
Yeah.
And he took it to court. And he won because it was just like you were talking. And, you know, if you got a plumber, basically, that might make his end calls home. And his truck sits there at night.
No, yes.
And so the judge saw it out.
But I wouldn't have, thinking, you know, you try to think of all the ways this affects different, I would not have thought of floor cleaning companies. And as soon as you say cleaning, it's like, all right, what are they storing in the shed?
Right, yeah.
PSAs are out there, I mean, similar to when we did a, somebody cutting hair. It wasn't a beauty salon, it was a hair cutting place. And somebody on the board brought up, are you going to do perms? Because the chemicals used in the perm is going into your septic. It's like, you know, so there's always that little act.
Are you going to store gas and oil in a shed?
Yeah.
In your gravel, in your little 10-yard gravel pit?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, but you have a question.
Yeah, I have a concern that this boy's going to be dealing with eventually. Commercial zones, like Zone A is strictly commercial. But since it's been put commercial, all they've been is residential buildings, though. I have, I have, I have built in a net commercial zone that I'm trying to put apartments into. And without changing the zoning, the zoning doesn't allow for me to put apartments into it. That's an issue that is going to have to be brought up to go over the whole, the whole commercial layout because our commercial district has changed drastically in the last 15 years.
Even having a commercial district.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that is something we'll have to look at, you know, as we look forward as well. But on to the yards. And what is a construction yard? I mean, my, one of the fellows that I use routinely at home, his wife runs his business from their dining room table. And he has three or four trucks in the yard. We help ride by them, but, you know, where is that money? But anyway, moving on. Some of the things that I had concerns were more to do with our subdivision regs. And on page five of the book, under the amendments, under B, if we make a change, we have to, you know, have a public hearing. Do we need to have a public hearing if we want to? One of the things, as Dennis said, I am going to accept your application. Right now, we approve the application. And we've learned, we've got to say, just because we've approved your application does not mean we are approving your entire project. It means you met the requirements of the application. I think it's absolutely right. We simply, it's not, we're not going to approve this, we'll accept it. I'd like to figure out where's I can prove the other one, design. Design to me is just, you know, when the guy comes in with a woman, sorry, with a scrap of paper, with a handwritten plan on it, hand drawn, you know, maybe to scale, maybe not. But it shows the overall design. That really just says, okay, no different than have somebody come out with lovely water colors, you hate the scene, this is what my vision is. It doesn't really mean that anything about this is exactly the way it's going to be. Because what I might think it can look at, like, because of gray, because of water, because of this, because of that, could totally be different. So I think that, and the other one is a PUD. That is the one that I think hangs up a lot of people. To me, a PUD has to have some commercial in it, multifamily housing in it, might even have recreation spaces in it. But I don't believe, and this is my, just my interpretation or how I, my opinion, is you can look at anybody who comes in with a subdivision. It is planned, there are units on it, and there are dwellings on it. But I don't think that's what is meant by a PUD, meaning the second term.
Have you dealt with any planned unit developments?
The planned unit development is very closely related to a cluster development from the concept of, it's a deviation or an allowance that's granted for smaller lots, less frontage, higher intensities of use, as long as other portions of the property can accommodate things like stormwater and septic. They are sometimes residential in nature, sometimes they are mixed use. It is not used a lot in Maine. But I think that the concept can work in certain parts of towns and in certain locations where there's a recognition that some, something about the area or something about the property lends itself to development that otherwise wouldn't be able to happen under the strict, maybe more conventional zoning standards. So it's like a contract zone in that concept. But, you know, without seeing, you know, have you had any experience with, people taken advantage of?
No, we've had differences of opinion, but no.
That's what we have. Amongst the board, we've had some, I mean, we have a definition of a planned unit development in the ordinance.
Yep.
But we don't come to a common vision of what it is. And so we've had some back and forth, is this thing a planned unit development or not? Because in the zoning, in the land use chart, planned unit developments are a different echelon than other types of developments. They, you know, they pull in other features. So, yeah, I mean, maybe you just want to familiarize yourself with our definition and form your own opinion. I think one of the biggest things for me is that you could have a subdivision on the road and they didn't really have to put, you know, it was on a town road. So they didn't have to put power in, they didn't have to put utilities in, or shared utilities, they, yeah, they didn't have to put a road in, they didn't have to do a stormwater system or anything like that because it's all kind of part of using the town's facilities. system or anything like that, because it's all kind of part of using the town's facilities. But then when they put in their own road and their own, they are supplying utilities for the units, I feel like you start to get more into the planned unit development, where they have facilities that they share on it, like stormwater management, or a dock, or just things in general that they all shared. So, I don't know, it is something that we are continuing to look at.
Yeah, I'd be happy to take a look at it. I, I think of Vision Project in Bridgeton, but you can probably think of lots of other examples even. You know, it's similar to some of those small cottage arrangements you'd find in Wells or York, where, you know, they may be year-round, dwellings may be seasonal, but, you know, maybe they're all on one lot, or maybe they're all on very small lots that utilize a common wastewater treatment system or wastewater disposal. Maybe, again, it typically has to do with density and lot size. This one in Bridgeton I'm thinking of, is that they're not tiny homes, but they're relatively small homes, they're modest-sized homes, that are built in a way on the property that they were all able to connect to the public sewer system, but there's a bunch of land remaining in the back that helped get them closer to net residential density requirements. So, in general, the planned unit development is very flexible, and I think it's up to individual tenants to say, how much flexibility is okay, and where do we want to draw the line?
Right.
And what district is it in? Is it shoreline, is it strictly residential, or is it?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I've seen them in land use tables within specific zoning districts. You know, there may be places you want to exclude those kinds of things.
That's what we've done in our ordinance, and that's kind of where some of the conversations have come up, as to is this thing a PUD or not? Because it's, you know, part of the law is in X, Y, and Z district, and should we, you know, how does that all shake down?
Yeah. The other thing, just, I just wanted to, do you, you happen to know, are mylar plans still necessary? We were at a meeting where we said, oh, they're not gonna be using mylar.
Uh, they just passed a new law that went into effect, I think it was a couple months ago. That says that they are not requiring mylar. That's in the subdivision statute amendment, so.
In subdivision, but another-
So if there's a local requirement for mylars, that would still be on the books, but the town in the back would need to collect them or require them to be sent over to York County Registry.
Yeah.
Because they don't want them anymore, they only want paper, but they're, that's the requirements for paper copies, not mylar. And presumably, that's, I don't know all the background, but presumably they'll, they want to make that electronic.
I was gonna, that's what, that's just what I was thinking, they get paper, they take a shot, and it's not an electronic-
Yeah, so, I mean, that's a, I think it's gonna lead to a lot of local ordinance amendments where, you know, mylar copies are required, but it's not really-
Right, yeah, because that actually-
Typical housekeeping kind of-
Right, because that is actually one of our requirements, page seven, I think you can see that. There. Nothing to do with Benwood specifically, but there are other things. In that, it says plans are delivered to the town hall, I'd like to have that changed to the land use office. It's very easy for someone to redeliver upstairs, and, you know, it's kind of like the-
Especially gate-sensitive stuff.
Date, you know, it's kind of like-
So I guess taking taxes, I hate taking taxes.
I wouldn't want to take taxes.
Because you never know, is this the property that they was going to take at midnight and we received it, and I don't want nothing to do with it.
No, it's a chain of evidence, really, it's like a chain of evidence.
The good thing with the subdivision regs, we don't need those for the selectmen in town meetings, so.
Okay, but it does say public hearing.
Yep.
So anything, if we wanted to change definitions, or a word in a sentence, like, we-
Chalney.
We, oh, Chalney makes me crazy. But, "We accept your application," or your pre-application, I mean, what's a sketch plan meeting? We're not doing anything, you know, that's a pre-application meeting. Then we're gonna accept it. I don't want, I don't want to see the word approved in there, because it just gets so-
Yeah, because the town-
But you, and, and what has happened recently on our big subdivision that we had, up until December, was it was reported that we approved the preliminary plans, and it was on one. We hadn't, we had approved, and I think that goes, by the way, guys, to when we make a motion. Okay? Do we pre-approve the motion? We're accepted. We approve motions. And so wording is careful, has to be careful.
Yeah, and you're talking specifically about subdivisions in this context?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, in the state statute, it says that the sketch plan does not establish standing, it's not anything that would start the timelines that are in the statute, it's not any, it's really, if the board is gonna take action on it, you know, you should feel free to vote on a motion to accept that plan. And I think that carries with it an expectation that, you know, the next version of this you're gonna see is gonna be consistent with that, but there may be changes, you know, there's nothing binding about a sketch plan.
And I think, doesn't it say, "That starts the time?"
Not, not at a sketch plan meeting, that only says, you've got, as I put in that, I did a abbreviated version of the timeline, and what I said was, I was right, it simply tells you, this is a project that's coming down the line. You know, and until you get the sketch plan application, which is different from accepting, here's my sketch plan, until you get the application, that's when the clock starts.
When you accept the sketch plan application?
When the application, but not, not when things are just delivered to the office. And it is very complex for what you do.
Very confusing.
Yeah, I think some of these are the things to keep us confused, really.
So Ken's got a copy of what subdivision regs and checklists, zoning limits, I didn't give him the comp plan, so I'll look and see if I can, I believe, you can at least look at this, and in your spare time, just kind of buzz through it quickly to see what horrifically jumps out at you. And then the next budget season, we can slow down a little bit better. But in the meantime, we can go through it, one of our workshops, we'll just stick to straight subdivision, go page by page by page on what jumps out, what needs to be changed, what do you want to give that up, and I'll get you a new one?
Oh, yeah.
Are all your notes in here?
My notes are-
All the notes on it?
No.
Oh.
If it's in yellow or green, that's me.
Yeah. That's the latest update.
That might be the only one-
This is the current version of the comp plan?
Yeah, if it's, it's-
It is updating.
Oh, yeah, and you'll find in there, I think the changes are in there, that we made.
Some, yeah.
Some of them, there are things in there that says should be reviewed by 2005, by this board or that board. And we did, last year, we went through, and we reviewed everything that called for our review.
Now, in the back, yeah, you said who was supposed to do it.
Who was supposed to do it, yeah, and we've been the only committee who's done that. And this is since nineteen ninety-eight, last year.
Ninety-one is ninety-one on Twitter.
Ninety-one, ninety-one.
Yeah, that was when it was first adopted, right?
Yeah, I don't think it has the adoption date in it, it's not that long, it doesn't come off the shelf as much as it should.
Yeah.
Right, it's hard when it's been a while, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we're supposed to rely on it, and then, some people say it's outdated, so they don't want us to reference it. So we do need to update the thing, we need to form like a subcommittee, and it would be great if we had some, the board itself just hasn't taken enough time in actually coming up with the directions to change in the things, but we have a little bit of direction in the next year, but I don't know. We gotta do it somehow.
We have to do it, and it does, whether it's in there or in our, in our planning, you know, according to Maine Planning Book, it does fall under the planning board, but you should have your subcommittee, planning board members, citizen members, you know, it should be all inclusive.
Or one finance member, maybe, like get some members from each board who are interested in forming a subcommittee, but
And-
actually pull it off, we haven't done it.
I think every town does it a little differently, sometimes the council or the select board will make the planning board, incorporate a planning committee, and sometimes they go out, you know, just have an application form and try and get people from the public to jump on, and sometimes they drop from other committees, like Eric you say, and it might be a mix. But, you know, that group, whatever it looks like, is the group that kind of, you know, can do the work itself, work with someone to get the work done, but that's the group that's responsible for holding their own public hearing on the plan and getting it submitted to the state.
Right, right, yeah, because, I mean, we can, like the review we did, took us most of our meetings.
Took us quite a while.
Yeah, probably at least four or five months, you know, and we finally got it done. But then, oh, don't pay attention to it, it's outdated.
Yeah.
It's like, wait a minute.
You're old school.
Wait a minute, timeout. We're very proud of our track record here, on times that, you know, this office has been taken aback over something and never have lost. I don't want to lose anything because of, you know, that kind, and you know, there's always somebody who's gonna have those looks out of the window, telling you exactly which is up.
Yeah, I mean, there definitely are things that you're gonna want to make sure match up with the things that you say are important to do in the comp plan. But I also think that there's a, you know, it's just a really good, going through that planning process and having those conversations as a community, sometimes really can be a very positive experience. Sometimes it's a little contentious committing on the issue, but I think having those conversations is just as important as having something from the state that says, yes, you have.
Well, they don't have a comp plan review person anymore, anyway.
Well, they're, they're still taking plans and judging them.
But they're going into the conservation office, I think, right down there?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but they, because I know, and I'll go back to subdivision, because, you know, we know it's coming, we've got a couple coming down the pipe. When? We don't know, but we've got a couple coming down the pipe, whether they're large or small, whatever. In the comp plan, it talks about subdivisions, it talks about more than finance, and the impact subdivisions will have on budget, and things like that. I mean, are these subdivisions that you might call low income, middle income? Or are they, you know, high-end kind of places? And we take into consideration where we are and where we live. If this is a subdivision that's going to be low income or elderly, whatever term you want to use for that, what's the impact going to be if you live in that? Rescue, that's your biggest impact you're gonna have, is rescue. That's the population that uses the ambulance, you know, kind of thing. They're not gonna be putting kids in school, it's for elderly housing. Now, if you're selling eight hundred to a million dollar house, guaranteed it's gonna be from out of town. You're not gonna be putting a big lot of pressure on the school district. You know, I mean, I would think very low impact on the school. Because of the makeup of the town, I can't picture a lot of people buying an eight hundred thousand dollar house in town. And so, in that case, you've got a lot of tax money coming in with very little, you know, using the transfer station, maybe, you know, maybe having the state road that's nearest to your house plowed, but, you know. So each one is so individual, but it's, that's all in the comp plan, you know, how it works. I think it's something we have to be very aware of, aware of.
Yeah, they said we need to get a new fire station, we exceed X number of houses in the northern part of the town.
Exactly, yeah.
It does, because it is fifteen minutes away, at least fifteen minutes away from the station, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Things like that.
Things like that, I mean, and it wasn't that long ago that this building right here housed the equipment, and, you know, you might drive fifteen minutes to get to the equipment, and then go to the fire or whatever you want to. And then the, the other thing, and I don't know how it works, and it would work anymore, and is this, and this is from the man chair, but, you know, when we're talking about forestry and cutting of trees, they're not, they are of value to us. And, you know, whether they're low value, and it has a high logging cost because it's, or a low grade of timber, and it's hard to get to, there's a certain charge that goes with that. Now, I know Maine has taken most of that away from us. I mean, if, we used to have quite a bit of regulation on logging here, and now we have none. We're lucky if we get notified that there's gonna be clearing done, and we might get it two or three, two or three weeks after it's done.
At least, yeah.
Or maybe longer, or maybe longer.
Yeah.
But, you know, there's stumpage value for specific species of trees. And, you know, again, depending on that, and I didn't know if something, that might just be something down the road. Again, these are things that, this is what this meeting does, we produce topics for discussion, so, you know. At this point, I think we would all agree that we would need some good input on subdivisions. Because this is the biggest one we've seen. We had, what, it started out at twenty-one houses?
Yeah, twenty-two for the cluster.
Twenty-three for the cluster, then fourteen for a non-straight subdivision. We don't know what it is now, because that one was pulled, you know, the applicant said he was withdrawing. And that's the largest thing we've ever seen.
Well, I think the focus of my work with the town is gonna be on looking at projects as they come in, and helping, again, make sure at the forehead what they need to to get development review done as efficiently as possible. But I think a lot of these things you're talking about do relate to a more town-wide kind of conversation around a comp plan update. It's interesting, I was writing down the things that people have been talking about, and so many of the sub-short-term rentals, the Airbnb stuff, the ideas around around extraction marijuana stuff, like these weren't even around the last time the comp plan was completed.
Exactly.
There's a lot of, like, not just demographics, where developments happen, like the physical characteristics of the town, but there's just so many policy things that probably weren't even foreseen the last time that got updated, so I think, I mean, I would encourage you to think about an approach or two to start. So I think, I mean, I would encourage you to think about an approach or two to start, you know, maybe having some of those conversations, because it's great for this group to have those conversations. But I think Dennis had said, you know, there's a lot of other stakeholders that are going to be interested in weighing in on how decisions get made and policy priorities for the town.
Well, we even said that with just changing the land use jar and adding some more stuff on that land use jar. We kept saying, when do we get started? Because it shouldn't just be five, six, seven people. You know, we talked about getting a survey out or things like that, or... And everyone's going to agree to it until it's next to their house.
Oh, yeah.
You know, whether it's a day key or something simple, sounds great, all of a sudden.
Everybody knows what NIMBY means.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Cool, if we're down abusing Ben, we can get him on the road.
Absolutely.
I'd like you to see his guidance through just about everything.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No matter what it is.
I mean, you can spend the afternoon, I'll invite you for dinner. I don't know where the money will come from, but we could probably pass that here and get a bucket of that.
Well, I do have plans.
So I gave my comp plan copy, so you can take that a moment, I got yours back to you. Then we'll pick apart our stuff, the subdivision stuff. Usually we don't change it while we have an application in front of it. But I think if the applicant's fine, if we made a change and we're good, then.
That's what I, with some of these words.
We've got two small subdivision applications too. I gave him one of them already to take, we just got to get a better one for the second one. So definitely, we've got three going.
Oh.
Well.
Well, I just think that's a great way to start the meeting.
Here we go. Kind of splitting up lots.
That's it. That's it.
I'm changing the words, Ben, from, for example, like we started at the beginning, from accept, from approve. During the application process shouldn't really.
Would that trigger a public hearing?
Would that trigger a lawsuit?
Anything, any change is going to trigger a public hearing. And I think when we do it, we want to make fifty changes versus three.
Yeah.
So I mean, that, my recommendation would be to think of these things as, you know, there's real substantive policy kind of changes, and then there's more housekeeping changes.
Housekeeping, right.
And I think it's, I've seen other towns take an approach where you just kind of bundle all the housekeeping changes together.
Exactly.
And then maybe have more of a one-by-one discussion on some of the bigger changes you're going to make. I think the actual wording in the local ordinance about approve or accept is a more of a housekeeping kind of change because there is a state statute, again, talking specifically about subdivision, where there's, there is a meaning. And there is, like, for example, up until the point where you have a submission of a preliminary plan, it's sometimes just go right from sketch to file. So, you know, I say preliminary plan, assuming you have a preliminary plan in place. So if, until that is accepted, stamped here at the town office that the plan's been submitted, any ordinance change, like if you changed the net residential density requirements in the applicant's favor or not in the applicant's favor, those are the rules that apply. But once, once the preliminary plan has been submitted, they're locked into the rules that are in place at that time. So even if you change the rules and they go to effect thirty days after someone submits, but, you know, those are the rules they're playing by, the rules that they submitted by.
Yeah, oh, yeah, right.
I think a lot of things that we see, like when we receive the preliminary plan, we need to notify the office three days after we receive. I don't know if it's received or approved, but if we get it in on a Thursday, Friday's very busy, we're not on a Monday.
We're not on a Monday.
Yeah, all of a sudden we're late.
Right, well, and you can.
Just clarifying that stuff.
And look at, you have to put notice in a newspaper of certain circulation. Smart shopper throwaways are a newspaper in town. And we don't, probably the closest one is Foster's.
Port Press is the one we, is our official one.
Right, but I mean, the closer one is the one in Rochester, you know. And who gets newspapers anymore?
But a lot of that is all state law stuff.
I know it is, but I mean, there are a lot of things like that. And it would be nice to be able to give our secretaries a reasonable time limit considering the times we're open. Somebody comes in on Friday, we had one, not only was it Friday, but there was a holiday. And we got to holler at, because it's like, you know. It is what it is in some cases, you know.
No, I think that, you know, sometimes the state will provide what those need to be, but there is, I think, a lot of flexibility at the town level, you know, when it comes to notice and how that's given. Some towns do, you know, you have to do a butter notices, but some towns will say, you know, what that means here is that you're notifying everybody within five hundred feet of the area.
Right, oh, yeah.
Sometimes it's a different distance. It's not just if your property touches, if you're in the area, then you should get a notification.
Right.
There are legal advertising requirements, and that's the kind of thing I think you're talking about. But there could also be in practice something that's a little more likely to be seen by local people.
Right, right.
You know, and not just buried in the legal section of the Portland paper.
Exactly. That's why it goes into the smart shopper, because more people are going to.
And that's not a bad thing, but, you know, from a legal standpoint, you shouldn't rely on the smart shopper. You still have to do.
Yeah, we said, yeah.
Yeah, it seems.
If it's something you want to get the word out and you have to legally post it, we put it in the press. And in the smart shopper for local people.
It's not one or the other, it's both. And five minutes and then you have to leave because it clocks ticking. One of the things that I found was, there's a lot of notifications that get sent out, at least three, two anyway. But we don't have to, we are not required to have a public hearing until we get to the final phase, according to our regs. I don't know how friendly that makes us. I don't know how many cans of worms that opens. And just wondering what you would think.
What do you see in a lot of towns for the public hearings for subdivisions?
I rarely see, and I can't even think of a community that has more than one public hearing. There may be opportunities during meetings where there's not a public hearing for some public comments.
Right.
That's just kind of either.
We'll accept some public hearing or not.
Right, yeah, and that's kind of, sometimes it's a meeting by meeting or project by project kind of call. But when it comes to public hearings, I've seen public hearings get continued from one meeting to another, but I haven't seen anyone say, we're going to have a public hearing on the preliminary plan and then we're going to have another public hearing on the final plan.
When do you see most communities happening, on the final or the preliminary?
It's a mix. I think that very often, most of the engineering and design and work on the applicant's end happens at the preliminary stage. And the final plan is just more, you know, putting dots on the i's and crossing the t's when it comes to, you know, having state permitting in place or having GIS requirements made or whatever other kinds of things are made. But most of the design work is happening earlier, like at the preliminary planning stage. And that's, I would, I guess I'd say wherever most of that work is happening, if you're finding it happens at preliminary, it probably should be at preliminary. But if preliminary is just more of like an official sketch plan and all the design work happens for final, maybe it makes more sense to have it at final.
Cool, any more questions for Ben?
Two more minutes. Thank you very much.
Oh, it's nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Awesome, you'll definitely be hearing from me. Thanks for coming down, seeing me around a little bit.
Just, just to be clear that, just remember the Warren Finance committee, you're clocking out at fifty-eight minutes.
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
What did it get you though?
The idea.
Wait, 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 it's not like the lawyer, your first visit's free?
This is my first visit.
This is the second.
That's right.
Oh, but you met, and you met with Ken, this is the planning board.
I mean, honestly, it's, I think the focus is going to be, again, on applications that have some kind of eschworm associated with them. I think a lot of things we're talking about here are things that the town would want to do. And I heard Ken say, you know, we have to think about, you know, level of effort and priorities and how things are going to happen. But, you know, this isn't, you know, I was writing down a lot of notes, but I'm not going to go back and start, you know.
But I think, I hope.
Putting a bunch of hours into all these different ideas.
I hope we gave you.
But this is a good intro and kind of a good, it's a very wide range of things that, you know.
How we work and what we address and what our forward thinking is like and that sort of thing.
Joyce will be born with sixty minutes.
Okay, thank you, bye.
We gave you the zoning, the subdivision rates, the checklist, and one application to make with you and the comp plan.
The comp plan.
Yeah. Awesome, thanks for coming down.
Would you like to be one of our associates?
Have a good afternoon.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll see you.
Thanks, safe trip.
Watch out for the sun in your eyes.
Better than driving in slush.
It was a dirty gas, about seven miles.
It's hard to believe, isn't it?
It's not difficult. I mean, you hear about that in some places, like where the fog rolls in.
Or squall.
Squall comes in, you know.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, bye now.
Have a good afternoon.
I was in Southern California one time with dust, like.
Oh, wow.
And that dust comes in and, I mean, brown fog, if you will.
You cannot drive through this stuff.
Oh, it was, I was, I was literally terrified.
Gavin, do you have any of the make coffees or did you make coffees?
I make coffees.
Okay.
Yes.
Let's look at what.
I'll just read through this if you want.
Yeah.
Ken, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just, I'll read through this if you want.
Yeah.
I was thinking it would go probably underneath home occupations on page sixty-four of the zoning ordinance.
That's the hottest thing is with stuff in.
Way to put it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I thought maybe we could roll it in with home occupation, but I think it's going to end up being a standalone section.
Page sixty-four, it's in there?
Yeah, page sixty-four, I put five point one-two, but I guess it would probably end up being five point one-three, which is now the factured housing code.
It was in there somewhere, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not too fussed about where we put it, I just threw it in there somewhere so you can, you know, think about it. And can read through these and we can just kind of discuss them, see if people like my suggestions. I'm not really super, you know, I'm just trying to, if there's anything I've got, feel free to write it right on there. So, so it says owners and or agents will be within twenty minutes of rental property. That was something Ken had mentioned at the.
Yeah, we talked about that.
I like that idea. And some of these things might be kind of redundant to put every one right in the ordinance, but some of whom, you know, okay, number two is rental unit will not be located on a non-conforming lot or within a non-conforming structure.
And most of the lots are going to be non-conforming in the shoreline zone. I was thinking that earlier, I had it as a question mark area over here if it was going to be permitted use. And this is funny because I've had two people approach me for the ADUs, and both of them are in cluster subdivisions for fifty-five and older. So in one aspect, we're like, our older population needs these ADUs, but it has to be on a full-size lot, and in the clusters, they're not full-size lots. So I had that as one of my chicken things, if we want to exempt that full-size lot, not to deviate from the short term, but.
Well, would we have to deviate on that? Or could we make it allowable in a senior?
In a fifty-five and older.
In a fifty-five and older community.
Yeah.
Rather than taking it out in its entirety.
I wouldn't take it out entirely, I'd.
I would, I would say it's allowable.
Allowable in a fifty-five and older.
Community. I don't know if I even say cluster, I mean, no.
Well, we want to get across that it's a non-conforming lot and the intention was to provide caregiver or, I mean, but on the other hand, it can be a rental unit too.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, yeah.
Not to deviate too far, we're still looking for a home for this on the five-two-one. So one sounds good, two we'll get back to.
Okay, and then I got three is within the shoreline, a little osipu, river districts rental units will not be located, will be located at least one hundred feet from the normal high water line, roughly the edge of a wagon.
I think that's a question too.
That'll be screaming.
Yeah, I mean, I like the idea, but I think.
Yeah, I'm just putting it out there.
Oh, yeah, this is good.
These are the things I came up with, I mean, you know. Residential character will be maintained through compliance with five-eleven, the Good Neighbor design stands for proposed development. Okay.
Hang on, hang on, please.
Which is right, Good Neighbor is right before this section.
Yeah.
Of course, I know we're talking about putting it in a separate document, I don't think it really makes a difference.
No.
I don't think it would either. It's just, just because why, isn't it?
Yes, right before it, Good Neighbor starts on page fifty-six.
But I, this, this is Good Neighbor and design stands for proposed development. I think, I see this more as an existing.
Similar to a home occupation?
Yeah.
Kind of?
Yeah, it's not.
Some of them, some of them could be entirely new, some of them could build a thing just for this purpose. But some of them, I would say it still is proposed development because they're, they're changing the existing use. It's a change of use, they're going from a residential structure to, oh, now they need another fire escape on the back. So that's like more, more building within the shoreline zone. So there are some changes, yeah, there are going to be some changes for this. It is a development because you're going to have to maybe.
I think only in the broader sense of the word development, changes, absolute, I agree with a hundred percent.
Right, they're going to have to do something to their building probably.
Yeah, I mean, you know, they may have to open like a dormer to put a second staircase there or something like that. If it's inside, I'm not sure, I'm, you know, concerned about it. What if, and what if this B and B is on the lower level that goes right outside?
Right, but some of them just a room, some of them are like a duplex, or a whole house, you have, there's a range of rentals.
So I think I'm, I'm better, I don't know, what does anybody else think? I think use for changed use or something like that.
I would think we'd have a list of compliance within this short-term rental ordinance. And that would be, and not trying to bring it in like it was a multi-story hotel or anything like that. Trying to keep it as simple for the least amount of, because the beginning of the whole thing is why are we doing it?
We're doing it because we have, I think you said maybe forty, fifty of these things in the town are ready. We want to make it a permitted use so that we can have a better eye on these things and make them more accessible so we get better communication with the owners. And it's not like this half-black market thing that we know and ignore.
Yeah.
Right, and then we can do things like the next one inspection could be completed by fire marshal and act of CO to determine egress building capacity and septic maintenance, which might be too basic to put right in the ordinance. But I think if it's, if it's not permitted to an extent, it's going to be hard to just send the fire marshal over there and look at the thing.
No, I think that's, I think that's.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be, it'll be local inspections in general, but I definitely understand the intent there.
Right.
Septic, we would want a legally exist, a state-approved legal existing system that's going to tell us how many bedrooms it is. And then we're really going to figure out how many people, what would be your maximum capacity for a bedroom.
Yeah.
I mean, normally, thinking in a normal house, you would say two at the most.
Right. Right.
But in this atmosphere here, maybe we say four or six or whatever, so we'd say three bedrooms, four people, twelve people max. Now, who's gonna enforce it unless there's a problem? I mean, it's not that we're gonna drive by and count how many people are there until the neighbors called again.
Right.
I think maybe we just ask them to pump out their septic more often if we felt like they were, had the potential for like a, you know, like they you know, some places we asked for some sort of septic maintenance plans or like, we try anyway. They're supposed to report when they do pump so that we know.
That's just good thinking.
Ken, when they, when an applicant comes in to expand their, their cottage or is the septic system part of this project is looked at, could we have a modern camp that's been totally renovated with a fifty-five gallon drum for septic tank?
If it comes through the plan and wood for relocation, which means what would trigger that is a foundation underneath it or more than fifty percent of the values being taken away and redone, you would need a state-approved system. So if you don't have a state-approved system, your septic is older than nineteen seventy-four.
So any state-approved system would be on file here at the town hall?
If we have it here.
Yeah.
If it was brought forward from the past.
Because the place was so old.
It's here, forty-six years old.
Right, but what I'm saying is we had code enforcement years ago that all the paperwork didn't ever ended up at the town hall.
Right, but a homeowner should have, there's three copies, state, town, homeowner, whether the, theirs has moved forward too. But again, if, I mean, most people would think a septic twenty years, you're pushing the limit thirty tops. So now you're down to nineteen ninety, would be a thirty-year-old system. Still gives you a window of opportunity of another twenty years for it to be.
I have, I have the original septic system that I've been running on in my house since I bought the property in nineteen eighty. I know there's no records of that septic system.
Yeah.
And so you'll get situations like that, and what do you even do?
That would not be a legally existing state-approved system. Was it put in in eighty? Well, you bought it in eighty and you've just been using it?
Yeah.
It wasn't installed in nineteen eighty?
No.
No, so that more than likely, if there is no documentation, it's older than nineteen seventy-four. So you're teetering a forty-five-year-old system.
So if you wanted to move.
Which if you had two elderly people or two conservative people with a small family, paper plates, napkins, cloth nap, you could conserve very easily. If you're renting this out though, that's different, cause nobody's gonna be water conservation-ish or in general.
Yeah, I have, I mean, like with my situation, I don't have any problem with it. I have a thousand gallon septic tank.
Yeah.
That was put in before, before I bought the property and.
But if you came in and you wanted to move the house or you wanted to make an addition, you know, take out the little side porch, put on another bigger whatever, whatever, maybe add a bed.
I'm all done putting things on.
Well, no, but if that were the, that were the case, add another few thousand because you're gonna put in a new septic system.
I built the whole house back in nineteen eighty without even a question about asking about the septic system. That's.
Well, I think most people must start backing up and you tell them, you know, it's time to do something about it.
But that's, that's the question you're gonna have, how are you gonna, how are you gonna how you improve this, you know, what you have?
Yeah, so if it isn't a documented system, a state-approved design on file that was inspected and signed up by.
So then it has to become.
Then you put a new system in, yeah.
Okay.
And again, to me, what triggers this is you've got it advertised online, on the internet, through a realtor, you are actively advertising.
I think, I think that will have to be spelt out very clearly in your, you know, so that you can say you have an unapproved system, this is what you have to do.
Oh yeah, yeah, unless they come in to register, if the ordinance passed. I wouldn't say that if you're renting it out and not online, you're exempt, but you're going to, you know, you're gonna be much more low-key than, cause as soon as somebody goes through this, especially if they have to pay for a system and put it in, they're gonna be my new deputy. They're gonna, they're gonna come in with a print of online and these are all these aren't registered, there are ten cars here, his septic isn't, I mean, they're gonna, all of a sudden, cause they have to go through the process.
But, but have you seen what the rental price is?
They're a thousand to two thousand a week.
Right.
And two's probably mid-range, so one to three thousand a week.
Because eight years ago, I did rent the whole house for five days and I paid thirty-eight hundred dollars per week.
So maybe my number's low.
Oh, well, no, you know the house well.
Yeah.
You know the house very well and if somebody can rent a house for almost four thousand or three thousand or two thousand, maybe you'll rent a room for a hundred bucks a night.
And.
You take one of those weeks and you pay for a new septic system.
For two weeks.
Or two weeks.
Yeah, and that's what it used to be twenty, thirty years ago, somebody rented out for a couple of weeks in the summer and paid the taxes.
Paid their taxes, that's right.
But now it's hard not to.
Right. What's your next one on here Gavin?
I just had access to water bodies will meet the standards provided in this ordinance under section five point two zero.
Which is the tree guy?
Yeah, just kinda, just so that, I don't know, I don't know, it could be unnecessary to put in there.
I would think so, cause we already got it as the ordinance.
Yeah, but I just wanted to draw people who are renting's attention to this area in the ordinance somehow. And specifically for this five point twenty point two A. Just talking about the footpath going down like to the, says the Shopen Nuclear opening, greater than two hundred and fifty square feet in the forced canopy as measured from the outer limits of the tree or shrub, however footpath not to exceed six feet in width is met, as measured between tree trunks and or shrub stands is allowed provided at a clear line of sight to the water through the buffer strip is not created.
You know, I can actually, I understand where you're coming from with that. And I could see that being on that, what I would consider what was necessary is that posting in the house that says, this address is, in case of emergency call, parking is to the blah 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 side of the house. There is no parking on the lawn because it's septic. You are not allowed any cutting of, you know, trees, whatever, whatever, creating a path, you will be.
You need to, you need to specify everything out.
Yeah.
Cause like in the campground, issues down from Apple Valley, they get away with the tenting because of the problem that they had. Two people would come in, we're gonna set up our camp, you know, we're gonna have our two kids. Okay, so there's four, there's a number of people each free site. And so they come in Friday night and Saturday night, there's sixty people partying, you know, at that site. You don't want that to happen.
No, no.
But you have to spell it all out.
And we, and there should be a contract, you know, and it could be in the, you signed a contract. You know.
You have to spell it all out and in reference, I'd like to go back, if I could, go back up to the previous one that we just spoke on.
Yeah.
The, to be inspected by the fire marshal and CEO. I don't really think that unless you determine the fire marshal, the town of Acton is the fire chief.
Right.
Technically, you'll find that the fire marshal is the fire chief of the town.
Right.
If you're referring to that as the town of Acton's fire marshal, that's fine. But you wouldn't get the state fire marshal to come here and do a, you know, a walkthrough.
So it's just that town of Acton, a fire marshal?
Yeah, town of Acton Fire Marshal. But I would, I would, I would definitely bring, I would definitely.
I just answered, I'm on the.
Oh, I would definitely bring the fire department chief in to discuss that wording there. And in reference to the CEO determine egress, that is basically the fire marshal's job.
Right, I just kinda, you know, these were duties that the two of them would do in common, I just come through.
You know, I, it would have to be in, in it would have to be, they would have to work together, but there would be a form that would need to be filled out if there are any, any issues on the form that needed to be addressed and they turn it into the canon, he would have to, or the CEO, he would have, they would have to address it. But the regular, the, the regular fire chief and, well, past two fire chiefs, well, past three fire chiefs have all been through inspection training as by their original, you know, their full-time jobs, which would fulfill what we need to do. But you need to pull in the fire service to do a lot of this, especially now that they're full-time.
Because I could see a thing where it might not end up a change, Ken, it might be his lieutenant, who is training inspections or.
And it takes fire service to be a, to be a firefighter one, you need, you need to have all this training.
Yeah.
To be a permanent firefighter, you need to be a firefighter one.
So we could put active fire department instead of fire marshal?
I think that would cover it.
You know, for now, what I would do is, before we go too far into this episode in that, in that line, I think we need to get Peter Smith in here, not Peter.
Ricky. Ricky.
Ricky Smith in here and get his concerns on, on these issues. Because if we're gonna be expecting his department to, to do the inspections and the full-time people that are there, it's number one, it's great PR for the fire department to go out. They check for smoke detectors, they check for, if there is a fee adapted to this, let's utilize the fee to, you know, some promotional thing with the town that, you know, we, fire department goes out and inspects the house, puts a no smoke detector, you know, in the house. But the only problem with that is that you're gonna start getting, when the thing goes beep beep beep, you're gonna get a phone call, you have to come back in and change your battery, you know, change your battery.
Owners or agents within twenty minutes, they can do it.
That's it.
I mean, that's, that's what it is to have a rental, you know, there's a cap stuck in the half.
The rental, the rental, the rental can be handled by the fire marshal or the designated department.
Yeah, I mean, I would just take out the word marshal, I like what you said.
Active fire department.
Yeah, this is just discussion.
I would add, I would add to that is yearly inspection.
Yeah, and I think it should, we should also make this a, we almost have to. Like say we say, okay, well, I'm done and this now is in effect. There would be a, there would be a gradual process, two to three years.
To, to convert those forty, fifty people who've already started, yeah, instead of coming in at their own.
They're gonna come in at their, some are coming in, some aren't.
Right.
As Ken says, the deputies are gonna tell us about others, we'll see things on the craze list and go from there, you know.
Upon inspection and approval, they're gonna get a certificate. On the certificate, there should be lines on it, number of vehicles allowed on property and where are they allowed.
So the fire.
Require it on the property.
Right.
Because if you, if it's not written down, it's not, it doesn't happen.
And expiration is, expiration date, Jim, on.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
But you get this inspection done, okay, it's all done in seven years from now, you're still doing it and you have it done, that's a good deal.
Right, but yearly.
It has to be a one-year expiration or, or two-year, however we determine it, it needs to be done.
Yeah.
And.
They gotta annual inspections or, we can come up with whatever we like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think that would be one of the questions that we, we should bring in front of, in front of the fire chief, Mr. Smith and ask him that question. What does he feel, you know, as a professional firefighter, what his recommendations would be, I think that would go a long ways.
Yeah, cause there, there has to be a lot of discussion, like on the parking. If all my kids come up for Sunday dinner sometime, they all live in different places. I can very easily have six coppers in my driveway. I love having them in the winter because my neighbors from right there, you have the driveways plowed.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
And they know that we share the driveway, but I mean, you can really, you know, and that's, but the other thing you touched on too, is some of these roads, why are trucks getting to them? They're not the easiest thing in the world.
Non-conforming lots too, you're thinking so small, access to it is difficult. Like the one was supposed to go see and there's no driveway to it. That's what you mean, we wouldn't wanna allow that as a rental.
Yeah, so if that, so if that's an existing camp, no problem, you can re, knock down, rebuild, do whatever you want. As soon as you're renting out to the public, now that changes things.
Yeah, exactly.
On these inspections, I was thinking like the first one would be the biggest cause they figured out the egress, cause say you're just renting one room in your house, they're gonna need two new egress out of that one room. But if you're renting, well, do you think you do or not? I mean, maybe we have to ask the fire department, I don't really know, but I'm thinking like if they don't even have access to the rest of the house, if there's someone else living there and they've only got the one plate of stairs to the bedroom, they've gotta be able to get out of the bedroom somehow, right?
Yeah, but I, I think when you're only renting, we were in an Airbnb over Christmas and there was one door that went in to the Airbnb. There was a door that I did try to go out, it went into the garage that was locked. But there was a flight of stairs that went up to the oldest part of the house that was unlocked.
Yeah.
And, well, actually it had a key in the lock. They couldn't come downstairs, I'm sure they couldn't anyway, but all we had to do was turn the knob and we could go through their house to get out. So I'm not sure. That's a good question, that's a good question.
Because if you have four bedrooms.
Good question for Ricky, that's a good, good question for him.
How, what does egress really entail?
Does it, like, does it entail, well, you've got a window there and we provided you with a, through a window, you know, metal staircase, you know, like they use in college storms.
Yeah.
That's right.
My only, my only concern with being in the fire service is those are the greatest things in the world. Okay, but if they're not mounted to the floor in front of a window, when you need them, you can't find them.
Of course.
I have them in my house and they're supposed to be underneath the king-size bed.
Right.
Well, they probably are, but if you need to go find it, you're probably gonna be ripping, if you realize it's under there, you're gonna be ripping the bed all apart to find it. They need to be secured down to be, to be be an emergency exit.
Right. Well, those are questions we have to ask.
Yeah, no, you know, egress really ties into the non-conforming lot too, if they are, they are potentially expanding their structure.
In the city of Dover, my daughter, both my daughters live in Dover, means an egress, to get means an egress is I have a window on a second story, okay?
I was afraid to ask that.
They would not allow me to use the go-around ladder because it wasn't secure. But I could build a fire escape platform three by seven up in front of that window so that I can get to the outside and off to one side. That is a, that is a meaningful egress.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is that a multi-family or just a single family?
Single family.
Rental?
No, residential. Uh, when you get in, when you get into, uh, when you get into multi-family, that adds a whole new...
Oh, yeah.
Here we are along.
It's almost like renting it out, like you said.
Yeah.
Well, most of this we wouldn't care about, it's the rental and...
Right, exactly. This is a great shape to...
Just to noodle on, too.
Yeah.
I got two more things at the bottom. Um, so you think we're probably gonna scrap access to water bodies we need the standards provided in 5.2?
I, I, I think we do, but I think it's a...
It's just kind of redundant.
I think it's also a good thing to add to, um, your do's and don't do's, you don't do, you know?
Yeah. And then I've got proof of insurance will be provided.
I would change will to must.
Shall.
Shall.
Shall be provided, I don't know where we want that, if we need to have a rate in the ordinance or if it's, we just have it in the special checklist?
It would be part of the ordinance, I'm thinking there would be a general heading, uh, you know, short-term rentals shall be registered and inspected by the town on a yearly basis. And then get into some definitions, short-term rental, less than thirty days, we're thinking.
Right, break it up into categories.
And then SDR one would be you're renting out rooms, as, uh, short-term rental two is the apartment, short-term rental three, whole house.
Yeah.
Uh, and then a section would get into the codes, the egress windows, the smoke detectors, posting the nine-one-ones, the septic, uh, certificate of insurance. Maybe that's on the bottom part, then looking at the, uh, uh, we require the permit to be posted, that would have the physical address so the people that are renting knows where they are and where they, where they're supposed to be parking, maximum parking spaces.
Yeah, pardon for that.
We're thinking... Certificate of insurance, uh, certificate for a residential house is one thing. It's totally different when you're renting it out.
Oh, yeah, I think that's gonna weed out fifty percent.
Yeah.
Because once they realize what the insurance company, so we have the small list, the insurance company could go out with a huge list.
Yeah.
Because they need to protect their assets and the people may say, it isn't worth it now.
Yeah, that would probably be the last one I got, is that fireworks are not permitted at rental properties.
Well, when you hit something, that's like to put on there.
That is the, that is the biggest difference.
When you, when you write it down on, on a piece of paper, you have to specify this is for commercial insurance certificate.
Yeah.
If you, it's not residential, it's a commercial. Because, but what happened, if you rented that property out, they could just say, you don't insurance at all.
Yeah, similar to somebody having a wedding at their facility, at their house. And, you know, if it's just once in a while, or they're doing it two, three, four times a year, you know, and if, it goes down to, if you're worth suing and something happens, you're gonna get sued. If you owe more than the house is worth, you're in total debt, you're in bankruptcy five times, and, you know, somebody dies at your place because you were letting them have it.
Right.
Their attorney's gonna say, gee, we run his name through the computer, we've, yeah, come up a thousand times and, uh, yeah, there's no money there.
Right.
You know, so, which, which sucks because, you know, if you're, get your act together, you're doing very well, you're worth suing, but...
When it, when it just come in, renting a room from somebody, the owner is in the premise with you.
Less than thirty days?
What happens if it's older than thirty days?
We don't care, going this.
For this thing, we don't care. This is just short-term.
Okay, so if, if, if they're just living with you...
You have a boarder.
You have a boarder.
You have a boarder.
That, that you're, that's paying you that...
We hope he's paying you.
Okay.
Your boarder's a paid unit?
No.
What we're seeing in a lot of communities is somebody will buy one of these big old farmhouse houses, or just big houses, and they put people in there that want to be sober, and they'll put ten, twelve of them in there, a thousand dollars a month, it's still a single-family home, is how the state's looking at it. So why it's a commercial thing, it, it, it's a loophole that the state hasn't caught up to, yeah. Because a lot of towns don't have regulations for it or against it, it's just a single-family and somebody's rented out twelve rooms to people.
The other thing that I would like to look at, um, over the path of the practice anything from this, is like Jim mentioned the last time, to sit down and have a conversation with somebody like Tom Thomas or somebody, uh, just see what they do in their contracts and what they cover normally, and there might be nothing in there that we can't about, and there might be something...
Trash, who's responsible for the trash or...
You know, I don't know.
Because if, if they rent it weekly, that's fairly simple, where somebody comes in, changes, flips the house, trash goes out, if they're there for a month, still somebody's gotta come in and take the trash.
Yeah.
I think it was having a conversation, and he's probably got the most experience if he do it, and do it.
Yeah, nice if we could do this, uh, do this both Acton and Shapley and take, take care of both sides, but that would be a nightmare to handle.
Yeah, yeah.
On kind of...
No, talking about Shapley doing their own, but running under, running under the same set of rules.
Right, now, wouldn't, yeah, it's hard with the lakes, I know, the hands are just crazy.
Well, well, how about doing it with New Hampshire, you know? That's wishful thinking, especially that Wakefield town, you know?
That's a, that's a difficult town to deal with.
Did I, did I say Wakefield? Not at all. Um, and now you, you want to...
Sure, so you're pretty happy with this, short-term rentals will...
It's, I think it's a...
Bring this to the next meeting and...
Yeah, I'll try to get the girls to clean up the notes here and...
It's a good place.
Very good place, and, and I think the biggest thing is determining if 5.12 is the place to put it.
Right.
And it, it kind of...
I think it would be like 5.13.
Or is it its own?
Right, it's definitely its own, but I don't have a hold to put it anywhere as in its own.
Yeah.
Well, I can move on to the, because I feel, let's see, what, maybe sixty-four, I think. I can, um, look, if you want to look at the land use chart real quick, I did throw in the land use chart too, and come up with, um, my proposal for the land use chart, uh, which is page fourteen.
Wow.
And there's another one. Oh, nice.
I just flipped it over.
Um, and I would either put it in, we're under residential structures and uses, I'd either put it right after home occupation or just put it at the end of this block. So either it would be J K.
Yeah.
Or I put it in just right after home occupation, but we, we'd have to change lettering here, so maybe we wouldn't wanna do that.
Make it a K.
Just make it a K.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, and then I was just gonna mimic what we have for home occupation across the chart. So it would be, um, if you're looking at home occupation, you know, it would be mimic this R, 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 N, C, C, R. So that's, that's my proposal for, that we would just mimic that for this. So all it would say is that it's not permitted in the resource protection, and then in surely and in little possibly, it's a conditionally determined. And all the other ones is just can, CEO review for all the other districts.
Right.
So that was my proposal for that.
If it meets all the standards and the criteria, well, a lot of its inspections are on the side of building and fire codes, the septic clean up today.
What page is one?
Page fourteen in the, in the criteria.
And really, can I know your building codes, or most of them, based on fire code?
Uh, a lot of them are very similar.
That's really originated from insurance companies.
With the insurance companies, yeah.
There were some things like, I'm like, you know, do we want to allow these things in the commercial districts? I mean, right now, I've just got it as review, so it's like CEO review, but I think that the board needs to discuss the land use chart too.
Oh, we do, definitely.
This is just like threw something on there.
Yeah, because I, I actually, I actually can see, going back to, um, you know, an, an ADU where somebody might not fit in, they're living somewhere, but they really don't fit in, but it's the difference between letting someone move in with them, and, you know, to have their own unit, or if we don't get this help, someone has to go to a nursing home or assistance delivery. And I think we have to have the ability to, you know, make a...
That's fine, that's fine, by the way, I can envision on use.
Yeah.
But if you look at accessory dwelling unit, which is B in the same section, surely and in little possibly, it's not permitted.
Yeah.
So, and I've got it as conditional use.
Yeah.
And I'd like to see them behind a hundred foot, but that's my own personal...
Right, I, and I understand it.
So that's pretty much everything I got on the short-term rentals.
Okay, good.
I did try to plug it into the book itself too here. Um, so I got contracted yards, um, I just started doing it, it's not, I wasn't, we need to come up with a, just a definition.
Definition.
Or a couple definitions, because I'm like, because some contracted yards, like, they're using every item within a six-month basis, and some, it's like they haven't touched a thing in fifty years. So there's a difference between these yards.
Yeah.
And I thought we could fit it in right after, um, short-term rentals, right in the same 5.12 or 5.13 sort of section of the ordinance. I think we'd be fine. I thought we could just group the two of them together and stick them in so we wouldn't have to change so much numbering and lettering in the whole ordinance, you know, if they went in as, if they went in two separate spots, it would be more difficult.
I would think that's gonna be right in the home occupation rule, right into that.
Oh, you think we could just put it right in 5.12, and then we wouldn't have to have its own section for the...
Right.
Yeah, I think that would be fine, yeah.
Yeah.
That would be easier. And, um, I had a few things here. I said existing contracted yards in excess of twenty-five thousand square feet will not be expanded. Twenty-five thou, I just threw a number on it, twenty-five thousand.
So half a acre.
Yeah, it's over half a acre.
Over half a acre, yeah.
So, I, I've written, I initially had ten thousand square feet, and then I started thinking about how big a school bus is, and how many school buses some of these places, you know, it's like...
Yeah.
Ten thousand, some people might, might go in excess of that, so that's just a number I put on there. Then I said a management plan which details how the yard will be used over the next five to ten years will be submitted to the land use office. This plan should seek to organize the yard, reduce its footprint, and revegetate. And so just people could say like, you know, it's like, what are you gonna do with the, these graders from the nineteen-fifties that are just sitting here, and they can say, well, in, you know, in X number of years, I hope to sell the thing for scrap metal, or, they write it down to some sort of plan, so it's not just sitting there. You know, some of them would be very straightforward, they're like, oh, we use all this stuff, you know, on a monthly basis and...
Well, we don't use it from January and March.
Right.
You know, stuff, but we use it nine months out of the year.
Right, it doesn't just sit there and things aren't growing through it.
Yeah, I'm right, we're not seeing, uh, daisies coming up through the pieces, yeah.
So I was thinking a management plan of some sort, because these, yeah, go ahead.
This I'm looking at, I, I, is an existing contractor's.
Yeah.
New, new contractor, yeah, it's, uh, that should be popping up. Uh, is that something that would come under a conditional use permit for each existing?
Well, the problem is that it's not permitted use. And we have them popping up, and we're trying to keep them at bay right now and not issue notices of violations, because, I mean, it's a use we need. We just wanna get it so there's a process they can go to be permitted. If it's something simple and easy, it's a permit through us. If it's a little bit more, it's a permit through you guys, is what I was thinking. But again, just like the short-term rentals, there's a couple of different levels to this.
Yeah, well, like, we have a fellow last year who put in a repair facility, remember? Where he bought an existing one.
Oh, the, the...
On the parking lot.
To the guy, yeah.
Uh-huh.
And, um, you know, this is where he did his business.
Yeah, but that was a automotive repair facility.
Right.
Which we have in the ordinance in the land use chart, that's a lot of...
Okay, but because it's automotive repair, this is just home business.
And if it was a home occupation, we're all set, not a big deal. But most people can't afford a garage, maybe you have to put their larger businesses into. Even some like the electrical distributors, if you order at six o'clock at night, they'll have it to your house by six o'clock the next morning, and they have people driving around twenty-four hours at night.
Right.
And like, huh, drop that stuff off.
Right.
So...
So in, in days, if somebody was to come in to...
It's gonna be a...
A yard or, uh, request permission to create a small yard someplace, uh, there is nothing available that will allow them to do that.
I know, I had a foundation guy start, and then they're not the neatest with all this stuff, because they just got tons of forms and boards and rebar, and there's oils on the ground, and they've got the big truck and the trailer and, you know, they're not, uh, similar to a building contractor that just saves everything and may reuse it, that, I mean, at least this is his tools and his stuff, he's not bringing extra concrete home from, from the job or anything, so...
The problem is, Jim, is what my thought is on this, is we have these issues that really should be dealt with. And doing like you do quite often, just sticking your head to sand, uh, and not doing anything, is bad to the people that do the right thing.
Right.
And the person next door just ignores it. And if we don't have something that addresses this, then what do you do? Tell everybody no? Well, that's good for our tower and our thing.
I, I would think that they start collecting the feathers for you, so...
You know what I mean, Jim, so it needs to be addressed.
Yep.
So, and I, I, for the first one, I had it on, like, new yards will be designed in a consolidated manner, not to exceed twenty-five thousand square feet. But we could, those are just scratches.
What's the, what's the difference between a junkyard and a contractor's yard?
Oh, junkyard's permitted use, I can write you a permit for that. But I think, are you talking a junkyard, automotive repair, or a junkie yacht?
Of course, old cars.
That's junk.
Automotive repair, you know, by automotive graveyard.
Yeah.
Which really isn't permitted, nobody has those, there's one, there's some around.
Who's that?
Uh, up and running where people came in to buy stuff and...
Oh, no, there's a...
Right, that's right.
What's the oil?
Doc Trump's to my head, he's the one I...
There's the one in each yard, you can, you look across the field and you can see the cars backing behind it.
Yeah, but it's...
See hatch, hatch?
That's a lot of...
That's been cleaned up ninety percent.
But it's not where they went to the auction, bought five cars, took a pot.
No.
Because now you're dismantling and inventorying everything and then getting it out of there. We don't have any of those.
No, it's not that organized.
No.
Larry's the only one.
He's the only one that's got it handed there forever, so, yeah.
Okay, so I've got these three more things on here written, record of waste oil disposal, and I was thinking some of these yards, they've got equipment sitting there for ten years, nobody's drained the fluids out of, they don't plan on moving it in the next five years because it's, they don't want to pay to have whatever it is, they don't plan on moving it. Um, so it would be great to have some sort of record of what they did with the...
Construction unit, if the equipment is registered, then they're all set.
That should be residency, right?
You know, and you should be able to buy your vehicle if it's registered, if it's not registered.
Right, we, for so many, so many months or a year or whatever.
And you're still running the business out of the property.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what it really comes down to. Again, we make complaints with the neighbors, and it's something you wanna prevent, but I just don't have a mechanism for it, so...
And then I, I got the current size and age of the yard, just like when they come and check in with us, it would be great if they calculated the size so that in their plan they could reduce it and if they needed to, and then also like the age of the yard, so they have, like, they can tell us how old some of the stuff is that's sitting out there, they inherited it from their grandpa and...
Yeah.
They got, at least so that we have some record of how old this stuff is, so they can say, is this no good or not, or...
And a lot of levels here is, you've got two issues. Existing and proposed.
Yeah.
The stuff that's existing is dealt with, like you say, maximums or swift, but you're there, you're all set, no fencing, no this, no that, I mean, depending on how far we wanna go back. It's the new stuff coming in that will have this full list of standards for.
Yeah.
Um, that we're there, it's something that gets approved through town meeting that, um...
And it's the same type of deal, you have stuff that was existing... And it's the same type of deal. You have stuff that was existing, um, before we had all these documents or as tight as they are now.
Right, right.
And then you have which I would say, well, you don't ask your grandfather, then you have the ones that started up uh, illegally, I guess, cause we have nothing, it's not a permitted use, uh, once it was adopted.
Towns never sent a letter or anything like that? It just multiplies and
You address those that are out there running without, without, they're not permitted, even though they were supposed to be. Or you just, uh, when you change this stuff and move it forward and make everybody
Let's see, so it's really similar to the, to the like minimal extractions, right?
Kind of like compared to that.
Yeah.
You look at the active fairgrounds, they're already operating. We haven't permitted them. They're taking out more than is permitted in the ordinance. We're aware of it. But it's just kind of, it's kind of like that. It's like an ongoing, I mean, this just allows us to get closer to them so that eventually we can get along.
Pre-existing permission, really. And, you know, I don't know, maybe we get a complaint from one of the deputies. We address it. If it becomes, you know, the neighbors call and they call and say, I had to do this and why doesn't she have to do that?
And being there for twenty years, definitely two thousand. No, I mean, twenty years sounds like he was there in the seventies and eighties. That's fifty years.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, this is really, this is a terrible thing to think of.
Sony came in in seventy-four, so. Uh, that, that's two levels there.
Yeah.
The short-term rentals, you're not gonna get a lot of local people at town meeting fighting on that, I don't think. Contractor yards, they're going to think it's anti-contractor, but yet it's just the opposite. We wanna permit them. We need them.
Yeah.
Without them, uh, it's we need, we need the services too. You can't have somebody who miles coming to work on your house and
Right.
bad enough to raid plus travel and this and that. They definitely move on it, just
How to get them in here.
Fitting in the community. Well, all right, I got some cleaning up on that.
The last one, I think that is perfect.
Seventy-five foot buffer with wetlands, streams will be maintained for wetlands that are smaller that are covered by the ordinance. Maybe, you know, things that are on their property, just you know, cause these things, yards tend to expand and
Oh, they do.
It would be nice to
I slipped in that ADU, um,
Okay.
It has like exemption on the full-size locks and a fifty-five and older cost of subdivision.
Okay. Um, if we're all done with this, because I'm looking at the time and I think you have a question.
Yep.
Um, one thing I wanted to bring up and it is, comes to, to mind with the, um, sketch plan meetings and other meetings when we get plans. We have to have time to look at those plans. And again, in an instance where we have a workshop, do you think, I need a lot of input, that it would be wise to bring those forward at a workshop? My workshops are public. And this would be with the, um, sketch plans that we meet and bring those forward to look at them, to go over a checklist. We have to bring them to the regular meeting, but so that we can get familiar with the, uh, you know, with what it is. So we're not, uh, 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 you know, at the meeting and we can really start moving them forward. What do you think, Mr.?
I think we're going to be I'm gonna use the word bogged down. We're gonna have all our plate just in zoning changes and subdivision changes.
Full.
Full. I mean, until we get to Aprilish or so.
Okay.
So, uh, the big thing is we're trying to force the people coming in with a subdivision plan for fourteen days before a meeting.
Yeah.
Now, that doesn't help if it sits in here for fourteen days.
Yeah.
And then we get it out to you guys, but I mean, if it does come in, we'll send an email out or they'll call you and say, there's a new plan came in or something. But on the other hand, uh, we're also trying to get them, if you wanna come to a meeting and give us the stuff and we hand it out at the meeting and then you can say, thank you very much, I'll see you at the next meeting, then we know you've got it, the clock's gonna start at that point too.
Yeah, and I do think it's one of the important things that is in there. Keep out the technicalities, keep out this. Give me that narrative. I wanna know what's in your mind. Give me that narrative. Shouldn't take you more than five minutes. Here's your paperwork. This is what I wanna do.
Cause they, they not be on the agenda.
That's right. Oh, if they're not on the agenda, they're
Oh, they're just coming in to drop the stuff off.
They're dropping it off.
Thank you very much. See you later. Bye. Now I know everyone's got it.
Right.
Full package.
Exactly.
And then we'll also, at that time, have them send one to them too.
Right. What I would do at that point is, um, if they don't, if they're not
Nora, say, Molly.
Good. That's not really, um, they need to but they don't get put ahead of anybody. If they have, they're not on the agenda, they're gonna have to
It's one thing when we have nothing.
We have nothing.
A couple of weeks. That's, I mean, we've been in there for a while and that's, that's gone.
It's gone.
If you wanted to, if you wanted to put a, uh, a line in for, uh, in our, in our agenda for drop-off of plans, is there any way here tonight to drop off their existing plans? Uh, now's the time, you know, you bring them up to them. And that way there, that will be an open, if we will be a line, it will, in the agenda.
I don't know that we have to be that terrible, but I mean, we
Most of them like to do it during business hours, you know, come out at seven o'clock at night.
Right.
But, uh, the bigger subdivision we have, he just loves to go in and see, drop stuff off and, you know, as well, so.
I would, I would really think that it would be and so many of the people we know when they walk in, you know, it decides, it's gotta go to Brenda. And Brenda is the best gatekeeper we could ever have. It's not right. It doesn't even go to Ken. She's about it, right there. She's a wonderful gatekeeper. And she knows she's got a complete, you know, I said the other day, she's got a complete packet that goes to Ken. If she did miss something, cause she answered twenty phone calls, when she's going through this, Ken's gonna pick it up. And it won't come to us until he's ready to pick it up. But I just was wondering, like you said, we've got so much between now and April.
Uh, we're thinking sidewalk this weekend?
Sidewalk this weekend, one, one o'clock.
Eleven on the eleven?
Eleven on the eleven.
And
We need you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can try to narrow it down another couple of vehicles.
We're good? We're good?
And I think, I'll try to remember, but I'll post a meeting for the thirtieth. I know we've done one in town here, but, um, and if we don't have it, it's easier to eliminate the meeting than to try to come up with a meeting at the last minute.
I don't get this Ken, but is, are the meetings, they used to be posted on, uh, uh, channel twenty-six or the show, are the meetings, is that still posted?
I don't, I don't have channel twenty-six.
What do you mean posted?
I don't have table.
I don't either.
What, what, what do you mean by posted?
Well, they used to
Usually run stuff all the time and, yeah.
They stop doing TV, uh, I, I need this, this station, access to
Virginia, do you know if we're, we're posting them?
I don't, I don't think it is.
Yeah.
No.
Thank you.
Need the new slide.
Needs a new slide.
Thank you.
Okay, guys, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Gavin, thanks for that. That was a really good, uh, input.
Hey, don't worry.
I think we can get this one.
Is, is the meeting over?
Meeting is over.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.